Okay, so we're starting tonight's meeting with a public hearing as we're required to by law regarding changes to the district code of conduct. We'll note for the record that there are no members of the public here at this time, but we will at least have some discussion or presentation such as it is regarding the code of conduct. Just to bring everybody up to speed, the code of conduct is a board policy, Board Policy 5300. It is mandated by the state of New York and has been since early 2000, 2002. The dates are on the last page of the document, 2002. We are required to convene a stakeholder committee every spring to review the code of conduct and make suggestions for any changes to the code of conduct. So we did that in early June. And in your packets at your places as well as digitally yesterday, there were two documents. And although we're not voting on them now, we're just discussing them now. At your places is a 6.2, 0.1, 0.1, which is only those pages from the rather lengthy full board policy that have any recommended by the committee changes. And then I did provide you with the full text of the policy also with the proposed changes included there in case you wanted the larger text for context in any way, shape, or form. Later in the meeting, as part of regular meeting, Board Agenda 6.2, there are three policies for a first reading. One of them is 5300. The other two were policies that were reviewed and had been recommended by a policy committee for a first reading. We will do a second and final reading and adoption of hopefully all three of these policies at our next meeting on July 31st. That's the game plan. So the changes recommended by the ad hoc code of conduct committee were neither numerous nor, in my opinion, terribly earth-shattering. If you look on page three, there was a request to include the language from the Federal Gun Free Schools Act. And then to clarify a few of the other types of weapons that are not called out specifically in the federal statute specifically, and pellet guns, and identifying pocket knives with a blade greater than 2.5 inches in length. Everything else there is the same as it was in the past. You should note that violations of the Federal Gun Free Schools Act requires a one-year suspension out of school, except it gives the superintendent of schools the latitude to waive the one-year suspension out of school. So, yeah, it's kind of odd that it's required, but the superintendent is permitted under the federal statute to use his or her discretion as to whether a one-year out-of-school suspension is warranted. So just, again, just so you're aware of that.
Joe?
Yes?
So the code of conduct refers generally to students.
Correct.
And the Gun Free Schools Act, does that mean staff or visitors to our school? Does that apply to them as far as carrying a weapon?
Yes, my understanding is it would apply to anyone. I think it was written specifically targeted towards students, but it could apply to anyone. In fact, it's interesting you mention that, not specific to the Gun Free Schools Act, but the question did come up about other parts of the code of conduct. And whether they apply to spectators of basketball game or soccer game or whatever, or somebody coming to a concert or whatever. And they do. So then the question was raised, well, how do visitors of the school know what our code of conduct states? And I mean, it's a great question, especially when you don't know. You know, somebody comes from a school district in the eastern side of the county to a basketball game here, and they're not going to reach the kind of people who would potentially violate this are probably not the kind of people who are going to go onto our website and look it up and say, hey, can I wear a shirt that says F-U Rhineback? Yeah, they're not going to do that. So what's our alternative? And what kind of penalties can we realistically levy on people who aren't from here? We can ban them from ever coming back to the campus. And we've done that a handful of times over the years, especially somebody who's being rowdy and obnoxious. And we had to show them the door and continue to be rowdy and rude and obnoxious, at which point we had to say, well, listen, if you don't stop and leave quietly now, we're going to have to ask you not to come back for a prolonged period of time. And we have done that, and we've written them a letter and let our police officers on notice that these people are not allowed back. And they've never come back. They could, but we would then have to deal with it. Somebody mentioned in the Code of Conduct Committee that we, which I'm not sure how much it helps really, but you know those little squares that you see that you can hit with your cellphone and then, you know, call up something? Somebody said, well, why don't we put those on the doors of places where visitors would be here, and that way people could pull it up? Again, whether they would or not, I don't know. We have visitors in lots of different places around our school, not just at our basketball games. So again, it was just raised as a suggestion. It's not addressed in the code of conduct one way or the other, but that's a long-winded way of saying. Yes, visitors are responsible to the code of conduct, even though they're not that difficult either, they're not knowing what it is.
So I think I read it somewhere. So current access to our SROs carry weapons?
Our SROs carry weapons, yes.
Do we have to, a policy or something for them to do that? And how would that apply out? Like, we have parents that are police officers also.
Yeah.
Coming to get their kids or in the uniform.
My understanding is if the only people who are allowed by state law to carry weapons in a school are uniformed law enforcement officials, not a parent who happens to be a policeman or a policewoman who carries their weapon with them, they're not on duty, they're not here in an official capacity.
In their uniform, if they're in uniform but still not in official capacity?
And on duty, I think that's the other thing. In uniform, on duty. They must have.
So we didn't have to do anything?
No. No. So anyway, yeah, I'll just keep buzzing through this. We can save ourselves a little bit of time later in the meeting. Page nine, again, I think that must have come from one of our building principals, expanding the idea of stealing, also covering being in unauthorized possession of somebody's, somebody else's property, a property that does not belong to them. Page 10, there are a couple of small redacts, which these would be the strike-throughs, and the inclusion of vaping and juuling paraphernalia, as that's become more of a phenomenon here even since we did our code of conduct revisions last summer. Page 16, there was a request on the part of, I believe it was Dr. Dattenport, to just tweak the wording on item number 12, to refer to weapons which are referred to in the section we read earlier in this, on this page of recommended changes, and also to clarify a dangerous instrument because, I mean, technically, you know, a sharpened pencil could be a danger since maybe somebody is prone to use it as a, as a weapon. So that's the change on page 16, as well as the top of 17. And on 18, I took the liberty of kicking out Walkman style. I heard something someplace over the last couple of weeks about, you know, the changes in listening technology and how Walkmans used to be the big thing. And then when I was going through this a couple of days ago, I noticed it still said Walkman, so I'm thinking, who uses a Walkman other than an antique dealer anymore? So I did take that out, although it covers all the other kinds of music players.
I guess if we ever stage a musical of the Guardians of the Galaxy, it might happen.
We'll write it back in at that point. Then again, 48 is consistent with the previous change about stealing to include theft or unauthorized possession of personal property. The committee, you also notice an addition of 1, 2, and 3 at the end of item 48. Those items which are, let's see, on page 15 of the full text, just again, if you want to reference it. One is an oral warning, two is referral to a building administrator, three is notification to parent. And there are, those items are in many of the other items there, but for some reason, probably inadvertent omission, the committee felt that they should be there, although it does not require us to start at number one. It all, you know, it's all situational, it depends on the gravity of the offense. So, you know, little Johnny in kindergarten who steals somebody else's lollipop, that might be, you know, appropriate for one of the lower-level consequences. I reminded the committee, and I'll remind the board as well, that this is a K-12 policy, so there's a great deal of latitude in terms of severity of consequences. It's something that a child in the elementary school might do, would probably not be dealt with with the most serious consequence. Again, depending on what was done, and so there's a lot of, because it's a K-12 policy, there's a lot of flexibility. There's also, I'm not sure if it's in this document or elsewhere in the policy, because we didn't, it didn't come up to the discussion point, but I think it's in here someplace. A building principal who feels that it is necessary either to levy a more severe punishment or a less severe punishment than what is in the range of consequences for a particular offense must first bring it to the superintendent of schools to clear it, to explain the rationale why that's way too severe for this particular circumstance, or not severe enough. So they can't just freelance that. If it's not within that range of consequences spelled out, they have to bring it to me, present the case to me, and then I either say, yeah, I agree, that makes sense, or no, I disagree with you, stick with the policy, just so you know we have that latitude to make those decisions depending on the particular behavior. And then on page 46, even though there is a section in the district code of conduct that was added several years ago, though not a lot of years ago, when the Dignity for All Students Act was enacted in New York State, which addresses bullying in a way that had not previously. The Dignity for All Students Act does address protected classes under state law in particular. It took the bullying concept from beyond what we had traditionally thought of as bullying, you know, gender bullying or whatever, and included manner of dress, for example. And that was not previously considered a protected class if you dressed differently from your peers, but now it is. A child's weight is now, for purposes of this policy, a protected class. So if a kid is bullied because he's overweight, underweight, whatever, that's still bullying. It's not something that isn't a protected class now. It's pretty much, pretty much everything's a protected class, to be honest with you. I mean, anything that might differentiate one student from his or her peers is called out in state legislature, state legislature, in DASA, as being a protected class. So what if the parents felt, and even though we have a section on there in here, it probably couldn't hurt to put it in there, and certainly doesn't take away from what's in other parts of this policy. So it seemed like a not unreasonable request to do that. So those are the recommendations that the committee requested. The committee does, did, it's that ad hoc committee, did include parents as well as teachers, there was a non-instructional staff member, I believe, several administrators. We did invite two students from the high school, they didn't show up. And, I mean, in other years, they have, to be honest, but they had a conflict, or forgot, or whatever. But we did invite students to participate, and that's our process and the committee's recommendations up to this point. Yeah, Diane?
One other question on page 17.
Yeah, let me get to it. Yeah?
So I understand possession of use of a weapon conversation, and not an obvious weapon. And I understand what you're saying, a pencil could be a weapon, an instrument, a backpack, and that's, you know, there's not an issue with students having that. I guess I'm wondering about something like a bat that a baseball player would bring, or a crossstick, or something that could obviously be a weapon, but students can have any legitimate reason to have it. Are they no longer allowed to bring those to school, or what's?
No, because they, it states, "A dangerous instrument is defined as any object that could be used as a weapon, and that is used, attempted to be used, and/or threatened to be used." So if somebody brings a baseball bat to school and threatens somebody with being beat upside the head with that baseball bat, now that puts it into the dangerous object category. If they just bring it, to bring it to baseball practice, they're not threatening anybody with it, they're not swinging it at somebody, they're not trying to hit somebody with it, so that's fine. That's not a prohibition.
Right, but the first, I mean, it says possession, right? Or use of.
Right. Well, a dangerous instrument is defined as one that you use or intend to use for a bad purpose. So otherwise, if not, a pencil. You know, not every kid who carries a pencil intends to use it as a weapon, but if you're lunging towards somebody to plant it in that kid's head, then you've crossed that line, given your intent or your use of what would ordinarily be a riding impulso.
Of course, this definition does not specifically call out intent. It's implied that the person intends to use it, but in a situation where somebody was, you know, waving around sharpened pencil, as kids have known to do, and put somebody's eye out with it, not intending to do that, but having that effect, in theory, this policy could be used to penalize that person, and we should consider if intent is something that we want to import into this, whether we should say that explicitly to avoid unintended consequences.
So I'll ask the attorney on the board. We're soon to be on the board, anyway. As you've been so useful in past years as a member of the policy committee, what words or phrase would you insert into that to also, I'm not sure, state intent, or to make it more?
Well, I...
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no.
You give back to me on that.
Yeah, I might get back to you on the specifics, but I would certainly use the word intent if intent is something that we would want to be sure was a consideration for whoever was going to be considering the application of the laws. I do actually have a few questions.
Yeah, sure.
Can I please stick on that one a second?
Yeah.
I mean, I agree with Lisa, but I think some of that might be covered in kind of the procedures and the people involved in making those claims, right? So the teacher, for example, that was in a classroom, would know whether it was intent or not, right? Whether she brought, he brought it forward, or thought it was an accident, or, you know. So I don't know if explicitly needs to be there, because I think it is covered through kind of responsibility of the person observing.
Well, I'll just say that I recently dealt with the matter as an attorney involving, shall we say, a neighboring school district, in which the issue was, what was the intent of the student who was subject to the disciplinary action, and whether that action was appropriate to conduct? And, you know, opinions can differ as to whether something that looks like a bad thing to the staff member was intended as a bad thing by the student. So I hear your point, but I think it's always better to be more explicit rather than less...
Yeah, I mean, it's still going to be a subjective call.
I think that's right. Yeah, ultimately, a lot of these things are subjective, but...
That's fine. I mean, the cleaner the better.
Well, it gives the district more coverage than, I certainly support the idea of not getting tripped up in, well, you didn't state the intent here somehow.
You can't do it.
You can, yeah.
Right. And we're going to go to the Commission of Education, if I could do that.
Right, because couldn't it be an issue then if I brought a knife to school, but I don't intend to hurt anyone with it? I'm just kidding.
It could, it could be.
If you put it in the policy, that could be a good one.
And some, you know, it's not unheard of that things like that happen.
We have had that more often than just about any other thing. You know, a kid, you know, a kid's fishing before school and comes into school and he left his pocket knife in his coat, and he comes in and it falls out of his coat. Now here's a knife. Did he intend to? No. And so we tend to take that into consideration, that, okay, don't do it again, we're taking it away from you, your parents have to come and get it. If you bring it again, we're not going to consider that you just, it's not, oops, a second time, we get it, we understand, okay? You didn't brandish it, you weren't, you know, lunging at somebody, kidding around, or seriously, okay, we get it. That's it. So there's a lot of judgment call.
Sure, absolutely.
Involved. But if you have any, anything to share, Lisa, I would be happy to hear from you.
I'll be happy to do that.
Before our next meeting.
Okay. So I do have a couple of questions. First one goes back to page three, in the definitional section on weapons. So where is the specification about a blade greater than 2.5 inches in length from? Where did that originate?
Yeah, I think Ed Dattenport showed it to me in the school law book. And that was kind of a new, a new thing to me, because that had never been in our policy before.
All right. I was just wondering, it's very specific, so I thought maybe it was some, something kind of. Turning to page nine, the three.
Yeah.
So the phrase "being in unauthorized possession" raises all kinds of questions in my mind, which I guess you could really summarize as, what does that mean, to be in unauthorized possession? So a lot of that's going to depend on the specifics of the situation.
Sure.
But, you know, it's just fuzzy enough that it makes me a little uncomfortable for the district again about, you know, are you going to be getting into a fight with the students or the students' parents every time, you know, this policy is applied to somebody? Ceiling's clear, you know, you took something that didn't belong to you from somebody to whom it belonged. But, you know, what does being in unauthorized possession add to that? And if there's something else specifically the committee is thinking about, what is it?
Yeah, well, I think the example I was given, if I'm remembering correctly, was Johnny's in school, he has a laptop. Somebody takes his laptop, or it turns up missing, now he's concerned that somebody's taken his possessions, and in doing a proper interrogation and search, the laptop turns up in somebody else's possession. It's in his backpack.
Right.
Well, is this your laptop, Billy?
Jimmy.
Jimmy, whatever. No, I don't know how it got there. No, I don't know where that came from. Well, this is clearly Johnny's laptop, it's got his name etched into the, into the back of it. It's clearly not yours. What are you doing with it? Why do you have, it's like possession of stolen property, I guess, if I can come up with an analog to the, to the Piddlyay world. It's not yours.
So you're saying it doesn't fall under stealing because Jimmy didn't actually take it, necessarily take it from Johnny? He might have...
I think that was, that was the point, that it may not always be, it may not be a possibility for the school administrator to prove that Jimmy took that laptop off Johnny's desk and put it into his backpack. But he's in possession of it, he's not carrying around a backpack without realizing he's got the extra weight of that backpack. It's not like, who rid of that? Oh, I didn't even know there was a backpack, and there was a laptop on my backpack. Come on, Jimmy.
Yeah, I mean, I hear, I hear the point. I do think that it's just vague enough that it might create issues going forward, but, you know, I just wanted to flag that. There are certainly going to be instances where it can be clearly applied, and I think that the example that is a good one. Also, on page 17, item 15, I don't have an issue with the definition itself, and I appreciate the, you know, the discussion that we had notwithstanding, but in what may be an excessively lawyerly comment, I think that this is a definition that should be in the definitional section, because that's where people look for definitions. And these code sections are kind of like sponges, they kind of soak stuff up over the years, and more and more stuff gets added as people notice... stuff gets added as people notice it or things come up, and it's probably a good idea not to, you know, overload substantive sections with definitions.
I don't, my sense is, given your comment, although I will check back with our school administrators, but I'm, my sense is that they wouldn't be opposed to cutting and pasting that into the definitional section.
Yeah.
As long as it's there and they can refer to it.
It's in one spot, they referenced another, right? So, it's not defined differently in different ways.
Yeah.
And then, the only other thing that I had was, on page 18, paragraph 34, so, obviously I don't have an objection to this, the substantive changes, but it's kind of the same issue, you know, this is a section that I would guess has been the recipient of many sort of add-ins over the years, and I tried to read it and to figure out what was prohibited and what was permitted, and it took me a few tries before I thought I sorted it out. And if that's the case, when I'm reading it, I've got to think that other people reading it are going to have a tougher time, or at least as tougher time. And so, what I wanted to suggest, not as an objection to approving these changes, but, you know, for the Policy Committee or the Code Conduct Committee, to take up the question of whether this section can be jiggered to make it clearer. And, you know, they might want to break it up into subsections, or they might want to, you know, rethink it in terms of categories rather than, you know, the kinds of specifics that we've seen here, you know, just so that when somebody needs to read it and figure out what's in and what's out, that they don't have to, you know, it's not a biblical text, you shouldn't require that kind of exegesis.
Well, I think that probably having the Policy Committee look at it wouldn't make the most sense with, to me, A, because they, they have the, the time over the course of months to have that discussion, and, you know, when you're, when you're asking especially laypeople to come in on an ad hoc committee...
Sure.
I'm the last guy to want to give them a six-month task to unravel that, but I'm not opposed to working with the Policy Committee on something like that, so I...
I just didn't want to presume it was the best...
Yeah, and I think, I think, I think so, but can hear from the Policy Committee when they reconvene in the, in a new school year, too. Point's worth taking.
That's all I got.
Mm-hmm. Are there any in the audience that'd like to raise a question about those changes? Okay, hearing, hearing none. I will still ask you to, to vote as a first reading later, so at least we can get moving forward, and then we'll take up some of the suggestions that, that had been made before the, the second and final meeting on July 31st. Okay? Cool. So, at this point, I would, I would suggest that we close this hearing on changes to the 2018-19 Code Conduct, and we can, I guess I'll turn it over to the clerk of the board to start the organization reading the agenda, so whenever you're ready, Whitney, I think we're ready to dig into that.
Okay. So, the meeting will come to order. We have one returning board member, Lisa Rosenfeld, who was appointed June 12, 2018, Board Committee, to fill the vacancy due to the formation of D. J. New York. And she will serve until the next annual election of board members on May 1, 2018. And then we have two newly re-elected board members, Diane Lyons and Mark Fleischauer, elected to three-year terms, and I need to look at both. Can I do them all at once?
I think you have to do it separately, do them separate.
Well, I know, but...
But you can do them all now.
Yes. Okay, so, let's start with Lisa. You can read your little script.
Do I have to raise my right hand?
I think so, that's right.
I, Lisa Rosenfeld, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee according to the best of my ability.
We have a disclaimer. We're signing, it's a sort of here.
Hi, Diane Lyons, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee according to the best of my ability.
I'm just going to just...
I, Mark Fleischauer, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee according to the best of my ability.
Okay. Just a reminder. Okay. All in favor of Laura Shulkin?
Second.
Okay.
Are there any other nominees?
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor of Diane?
So, nominations for the, nominations for Vice, for Vice President?
Let's nominate Diane Lyons.
Second. Okay. And are there any other nominations? Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Diane? Okay, as Vice President of the Board, okay. Congratulations, Diane, you were...
Do they, do you need to administer a note, yeah, Diane?
Oh, I do, okay. Oh, yes. As Vice President?
Yes.
Only as Vice President.
Oops.
Sorry. Okay. So, here's your card again.
Same, the same thing?
The same thing that you're going to say, Vice President, instead of...
Oh, okay. Okay. I, Diane Lyons, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Vice President according to the best of my ability.
Okay. So, you're signing here.
Okay. I'm going to move up there in case I stumble on you.
Watch your step there.
Three.
No, no, one at a time, unless it's, there's a section where...
One at a time, and then go.
Yes, yes. The ones with the, that consent agenda is the ones that I had the excuse.
Okay. So, then I don't have to read the...
I think we have, yeah.
May I have a motion to appoint Whitney Drucker as Clerk of the Board of Education?
We skip, we skip something?
Yeah.
Yeah. Call for nominations to the...
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay. I have nominations to the position of Executive Committee Member for the 2018-19 School Year for the Dutchess County School Boards Association.
We have, we have...
Yeah.
Mark, did you think it should be...
I'll be...
Nominate for Fleischauer?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes.
All right. All in favor? Sorry, this might take a little bit.
It's all right.
Okay, the motion passes.
Excuse me, before you go on, the, the next item is other leadership positions and committee assignments from the Board of Education, and at your places are those items that I believe you and Aldera collected before she left the Board, so I would suggest giving them a quick, a quick glance to make sure that they are accurate, there's nothing to vote on, but just want to record the fact that everybody is amenable to the items on that list, and that we can start voting.
All right. I have a motion to appoint Whitney Drucker as Clerk of the Board of Education for the 2018-2019 School Year. That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Christine Natale as School District Treasurer for the 2018-19 School Year with the appointment of Elizabeth Van Kuren as Deputy School Treasurer for the 2018-19 School Year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Susan McFarneck as School Tax Collector for the 2018-19 School Year at no additional stipend.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Steve Banger as Claims Auditor at the rate of $29.18 per hour, or minimum of $125 per day, for the 2018-19 School Year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Thomas Purnell, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services, as District Purchasing Agent, and Joseph L. Fallon, Superintendent of Schools, as Deputy Purchasing Agent for the 2018-19 School Year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Marvin Krebs as Title, Title IX, Title VII Coordinator, Title VI Coordinator, and Non-Discrimination Complaint Officer for the 2018-19 School Year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Christine Natale, District Treasurer, as additional Title IX, Title VII Coordinator, Title VI Coordinator, and Non-Discrimination Complaint Officer on an as-needed basis for the 2018-19 School Year, with compensation for related investigations at her hourly rate.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Emily Davison, Director of Special Education, as Section 504 ADA Coordinator for the 2018-19 School Year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Joseph L. Fallon, Superintendent of Schools, as Designated Education Official for the 2018-19 School Year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to designate Emily Davison, Director of Special Education, to attend last chance resolution sessions or mediation sessions required by the IDA, with the authority to execute settlement agreements on behalf of the district following consultation with the Superintendent of Schools, or practical notification to the Board President or Vice President in his or her absence of the contents of any settlement agreement for the 2018-19 School Year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Carolyn Peck as Central Treasurer for the Extra Classroom Activity Fund for the 2018-19 School Year at a stipend of $2,612.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Susan McFarneck as School Tax Collector for the 2018-19 School Year at no additional stipend.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Susan McFarneck as School Tax Collector for the 2018-19 School Year at no additional stipend.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Steve Banger as Claims Auditor at the rate of $29.18 per hour, or minimum of $125 per day, for the 2018-19 School Year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Thomas Purnell, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services, as District Purchasing Agent, and Joseph L. Fallon, Superintendent of Schools, as Deputy Purchasing Agent for the 2018-19 School Year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Joseph L. Fallon, Superintendent of Schools, as Designated Education Official for the 2018-19 School Year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Thomas Purnell, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services, as District Purchasing Agent, and Joseph L. Fallon, Superintendent of Schools, as Deputy Purchasing Agent for the 2018-19 School Year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Thomas Purnell, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services, as District Purchasing Agent, and Joseph L. Fallon, Superintendent of Schools, as Deputy Purchasing Agent for the 2018-19 School Year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Marvin Krebs as Title, Title IX, Title VII Coordinator, Title VI Coordinator, and Non-Discrimination Complaint Officer for the 2018-19 School Year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Marvin Krebs as Title, Title IX, Title VII Coordinator, Title VI Coordinator, and Non-Discrimination Complaint Officer on an as-needed basis for the 2018-19 School Year, with compensation for related investigations at her hourly rate.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Christine Natale, District Treasurer, as additional Title IX, Title VII Coordinator, Title VI Coordinator, and Non-Discrimination Complaint Officer on an as-needed basis for the 2018-19 School Year, with compensation for related investigations at her hourly rate.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Christine Natale, District Treasurer, as additional Title IX, Title VII Coordinator, Title VI Coordinator, and Non-Discrimination Complaint Officer on an as-needed basis for the 2018-19 School Year, with compensation for related investigations at her hourly rate.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Emily Davison, Director of Special Education, as Section 504 ADA Coordinator for the 2018-19 School Year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Joseph L. Fallon, Superintendent of Schools, as Designated Education Official for the 2018-19 School Year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to appoint Teresa Gostakis, the BMS RHS School Nurse, and Mary Skeen, the CLS School Nurse, as Attendant Supervisors for the 2018 School Year at no additional salary, as included in the duties of School Nurse.
So moved.
Second. Motion to appoint the workplace at Mid-Hudson Regional Hospital to provide school physician services, and Dr. Rajiv Rulup as Chief Medical Officer at the cost of $8,376 for the 2018-19 School Year, and motion to appoint Sheldon Teeter, Director of Facilities, as a vestis designated chemical hygiene officer pursuant to OSHA and school pesticide representative for the school district for the 2018-19 School Year, and motion to appoint Whitney Drucker, Secretary to the Superintendent, as Records, Assistant Officer, Thomas Purnell, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services, as Records Management Officer, and Joseph L. Fallon, Superintendent of Schools, as Records Appeals Officer for the 2018-19 School Year at no additional salary, and motion to, upon recognition, Superintendent of Schools, to designate building principals Edward Evanport, John Chemnitzer, and Brett King as 2018-19 Dignity Act Coordinators for their respective schools as required by the Dignity for All Students Act and by Section, Section IX of Board of Education Policy of 5300 Code of Conduct to lead and coordinate the efforts of each school's Dignity for All Students Act team in proactively addressing and responding to any and all incidents of bullying, discrimination, hazing, and/or harassment as identified in the state law and board policy.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. Motion to direct Thomas Purnell, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services, to make payments of monies for investments, investment on bonds as it becomes due, payments to redeem bonds as they become due, checks to cover payroll and agency account deposits, utility bills, expense payments to employees, and payments under contractual agreements.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. Motion to approve the following designations. Motion to designate the M&amp;T Bank, NYLAF, and ENY Mellon as official depositories of funds for the school district for the 2018-19 School Year, other financial institutions will be brought to the Board in the course of a year for approval of investment services if necessary. Motion to designate the Daily Freeman as the original district newspaper, official district newspaper, and the Poughkeepsie Journal designated as the alternate official newspaper for the district for the 2018-19 School Year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Forgive me if I've forgotten, this was explained before, what is age coordinator?
I believe it's like age discrimination issues.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor? That motion passes. I have a motion to designate Emily Davison, Director of Special Education, to attend last chance resolution sessions or mediation sessions required by the IDA, with the authority to execute settlement agreements on behalf of the district following consultation with the Superintendent of Schools, or practical notification to the Board President or Vice That motion passes. I have a motion to designate Emily Davison, director of special education, to attend last chance resolution sessions or mediation sessions required by the IDA with the authority to execute settlement agreements on behalf of the district following consultation with the superintendent of schools or practical and notification to the board president or vice president in his or her absence of the contents of any settlement agreement for the 2018-19 school year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the following additional appointments? Motion to appoint Teresa Gostakis, the BMS RHS school nurse, and Mary Skeen, the CLS school nurse, as attendance supervisors for the 2018 school year at no additional salary as included in the duties of school nurse.
So moved.
Second.
I think we can, I think we can just go, just read the whole list and vote it.
Motion to appoint the workplace at Mid-Hudson Regional Hospital to provide school physician services and Dr. Rajiv Rulup as chief medical officer at the cost of $8,376 for the 2018-19 school year. And motion to appoint Sheldon Teeter, director of facilities, as a vestis designated chemical hygiene officer pursuant to OSHA and school pesticide representative for the school district for the 2018-19 school year. And motion to appoint Whitney Drucker secretary to the superintendent as records, assistant officer, Thomas Purnell, assistant superintendent for support services, as records management officer, and Joseph L. Fallon, superintendent of schools, as records appeals officer for the 2018-19 school year at no additional salary. And motion to, from the recognition superintendent of schools, to designate building principals Edward Evanport, John Chemnitzer, and Brett King as 2018-19 Dignity Act coordinators for their respective schools as required by the Dignity for All Students Act and by section nine of Board of Education Policy of 5300 Code of Conduct to lead and coordinate the efforts of each school's Dignity for All Students Act team in proactively addressing and responding to any and all incidents of bullying, discrimination, hazing, and/or harassment as identified in the state law and board policy.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. Motion to direct Thomas Purnell, assistant superintendent for support services, to make payments of monies for investments, investment on bonds as it becomes due, payments to redeem bonds as they become due, checks to cover payroll and agency account deposits, utility bills, expense payments to employees, and payments under contractual agreements.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. Motion to approve the following designations. Motion to designate the M&amp;T Bank, NYLAF, and ENY Mellon as official depositories of funds for the school district for the 2018-19 school year. Other financial institutions will be brought to the Board in the course of a year for approval of investment services if necessary. Motion to designate the Daily Freeman as the original district newspaper, official district newspaper, and the Poughkeepsie Journal designated as the alternate official newspaper for the district for the 2018-19 school year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. Motion to approve the following authorizations. Motion to authorize Thomas Purnell, assistant superintendent for support services, and Christine Natale, district treasurer, to have access to the safe deposit maintained by the school district at the M&amp;T Bank for the 2018-19 school year. Motion to authorize petty cash funds at the following locations and in the following amounts for the 2018-19 school year. Location business office, $100, secretary to business administrator. Tax collection office, $100, tax collector. Chancellor Elementary School, $100, elementary school principal. Oakley Middle School, $100, middle school principal. Rhinebeck High School, $100, high school principal. And Interscholastic, $50, athletic director. CLS Kitchen, $10, district treasurer. BMS Kitchen, $60, district treasurer. And RHS Kitchen, $100, district treasurer. Motion to authorize Joseph L. Fallon, superintendent of schools, to approve transfers to budget codes up to $20,000 per transfer for the 2018-19 school year. Motion to authorize Joseph L. Fallon, superintendent of schools, and Thomas Purnell, assistant superintendent for support services, as a payroll certification officer for the 2018-19 school year. Motion to authorize Joseph L. Fallon, superintendent of schools, to approve or disapprove all conference requests for the 2018-19 school year. Motion to authorize Joseph L. Fallon, superintendent of schools, to apply for grants and aid for the school district, state, federal, foundation, and private sources for the 2018-19 school year. And motion to delegate the Board of Education's authority pursuant to Commissioner's Regulation 100.2 Y to Joseph L. Fallon, superintendent of schools, to have full and final authority to make determinations regarding student residency.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I have a question. On C, the change from 5,000 to 20,000, is that this year, is that new this year? Or what?
In the spring, they reviewed the business office policies, and it was recommended to increase it to 20,000.
Oh, so the Board...
So, yeah, the Policy Committee made the recommendation.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? This motion passes. Motion to re-adopt all previous board policies and the Code of Ethics.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to prove that the meetings of the Board of Education of the Rhinebeck Central School District be held on the dates indicated on the schedule submitted at 7:00 PM in the high school and middle school library for the 2018-19 school year or in alternative locations or times as noted on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes. Just like to bring to the Board's attention, you have a copy of the meeting schedule. I do have it placed just there. That September 11 is, September 9th at sundown is the start of...
Krasashana?
Krasashana, yes, thank you. And it goes until sundown on September 11. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of the fact that, again, I don't think it's an issue because typically we're not meeting until evening, but I'd rather bring it up now and have somebody throw a red flag on the pitch and say, no, we shouldn't do that. We should make it another night. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. That's all. I just pointed the information.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Motion passes. Motion to adopt the per mile reimbursement rate set by the Internal Revenue Service, which currently is .545 cents for approval, for approved use of personal vehicles on school business subject to change of Internal Revenue reimbursement rates.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. Motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, the Rhinebeck Central School District will waive the fingerprinting fee of $99 for all new employees who are hired to work less than 20 hours per week or receive a salary of $30,000 or less, except for per diem substitutes. The district will reimburse per diem substitutes for this expense after the completion of 10 days of work and the submission of proof of payment documentation. The district will pay this fee in advance for all others as outlined above.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. Motion to accept the list of New York State certified impartial hearing officers for Dutchess County for the 2018-19 school year as updated by the New York State Education Department in accordance with Section 200.31 of the Commissioner's Regulation for the purpose of conducting special education impartial hearings with compensation of such impartial hearing officers in accordance with board policy.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. Motion to appoint Shaw Pearlson, May, and Lambert, L. P. attorneys at law as school attorneys for the 2018-19 school year at a retainer fee of $32,000 and such attorney is assigned as investigator for the Title IX, Title VII, and other matters of the 2018 school year if and as needed.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve all persons and positions required by law or regulation to be bonded. Example, deputy treasurer, central treasurer, activity fund, claims auditor, deputy claims auditor, purchasing agent in the amount of $100,000 per employee per occurrence, $1,000,000 per occurrence for the tax collector, $1,000,000 per occurrence for the treasurer for the 2018-19 school year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. Motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Rhinebeck Central School District hereby appoints Thomas Purnell, assistant superintendent for support services, as trustee, and Joseph L. Fallon, superintendent of schools, as alternate trustee representing the Rhinebeck Central School District for the Dutchess County Workers Compensation Cooperative effective July 1st, 2018, to serve in such capacity until the appointment is rescinded by the Board or another individual is appointed in his place.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. Motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Rhinebeck Central School District hereby appoints Thomas Purnell, assistant superintendent for support services, as trustee, and Joseph L. Fallon, superintendent of schools, as alternate trustee representing the Rhinebeck Central School District for the Dutchess Educational Health Insurance Consortium effective July 1st, 2018, to serve in such capacity until the appointment is rescinded by the Board or another individual is appointed in his place.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passes.
Wait, wait, is that a big breath?
Big breath.
Get a bottle of water. Sorry, I had some...
All right. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 26, 2018 regular meeting?
So moved.
Any?
No.
Second. Any discussion?
Excuse me, I just, Laura had brought up a correction. Whitney made it, so what you have in front of you is correct per Mars.
So the minutes as amended?
Well, as presented.
Okay, yes, isn't it? All in favor? Upstain? Motion passes. Now we have time for public comment. Seeing no public, we'll move on to reports and discussion for the 2018-19 board goal development process.
Hey, just want to keep it on there until we have some, I have some indication from the board members as to whether we want to establish a separate standalone, not connected with a board meeting, board workshop to develop goals for the coming year, or whether it's the interest of the board to say, come in early and tag it on to the front end of a, I know the board meeting. It's really up to, it's a pleasure of the board.
Are we deciding tonight?
You don't have to, but I'm just keeping it on our agenda so we won't let it get away from us. And just so everybody remembers, we're meeting again in terms of regular meetings on July 31st, August 14th, and August 28th.
Would everyone prefer to have it as a separate meeting? Would that be everybody's preference?
I'd prefer to have it on a meeting night. It could.
Is that everybody's preference? Because then that just narrows it down for...
Yeah, it narrows down the shades.
Yeah, I think so.
Is everyone here in all those meetings?
We're not here on the 31st.
I'm not here on the 31st.
14th, I have not heard anybody say that they are not available on the 14th or the 28th yet, so it might make sense to maybe go with the 14th if everybody has indicated. No. Absence some, something that comes up.
6 o'clock?
That would be...
6:00, we start at 7:00. I think that'd be kind of miraculous, but...
Well, what's the earliest everyone can get here?
Oh, 6:00.
Is the earliest you can get here.
We could provide dinner that night, too, if that's an issue.
Yeah, we certainly could.
What's that?
We could provide dinner if that's...
Dinner so people could...
Oh, okay.
If you came right from work or something of that nature.
It probably will take longer than an hour, just...
Yeah.
Even if we send stuff ahead of time, like it could take longer than an hour.
Is 5:30 going to be okay?
The more time we have, the more likely we'll be done by the time the board...
Or, or the alternative is to do it another night or another day.
Or perhaps part two, the second one.
Yeah.
If we don't finish, then you've got August 28th to come in.
There you go.
I mean, there's no right or wrong. It's what you guys want, what works in your schedules.
So why don't we see if there's another date that works and if not, then we'll keep to August 14th, is that what we're saying?
That's not what I was hearing, but...
No.
Start on the 14th at 5:30.
Oh, start at 5:30.
And then if we have to go over to the 28th, we'll deal with it on the 14th.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Whitney, did you get that now?
And I think like last time, people want to submit their ideas ahead of time. That gets a lot of work started.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
That's a good... Do that be emailed to Laura in the previous years? I hear, I hear she's going to be Costa Rica for five weeks.
I think you want to have a deadline date by which people get their stuff in, though, so, you know, we're not scrambling the day before.
Maybe by the 30th?
I was, thank you, you read my mind, yeah. I was going to say, just to keep us on track, if people shoot for getting them into Laura by July 31st, that way we've got a little time between the 31st and the 14th, massage and we work, you know, kind of get them ready to actually sit there and say, does this do it for all seven board members or not? So I think that's a good timeline.
Okay, committee reports. Finance?
Finance. All right, so this was maybe have 14. And the items we discussed, first off, the state aid reimbursements. In previous years, programs such as Camp Ramapo and Arts in Education have been paid through BOSIS, which then makes the program eligible for BOSIS aid, a 50% return the following year. The question is, do we want those returned money to be put toward the next year, and would the PTSO or the RSF reject that plan? The second item was cafeteria participation. Reviewing cafeteria participation for the past four years, we can note that there was an increase in participation when Larry Anthony joined our district in the 2015-16 school year, that there was a slight decrease when new regulations came into effect on the 2016-17 school year. Perhaps less sodium, high fiber, less sugar was of less interest, and that there had been a steady increase of free and reduced meals. Note that the percentage of free and reduced meals is increasing with decreasing enrollment. The third item was cafeteria profit and loss. Our revenue for 2017-18 is in the positive, but please note that June is not included and participation drops off at the end of the school year. We have a payment to Redhook in excess of $4,000. The district is reassessing the after-school snack program, confirming that the program is covering labor costs, not losing money, and at minimum, breaking even. The Pine Plains food director is retiring, and their district has approached us asking for a possible three-way share, Redhook, Rhinebeck, and Pine Plains. We have met a few times discussing the possibility, bearing in mind that for our district, the top priorities are no additional cost, no compromising the quality of our program, and that it is feasible for Larry's schedule. There is potential for savings, as Pine Plains is hiring someone to do paperwork and sharing that service, but we are still assessing and working with lawyers regarding detail. We can do a year-long test run, and if it is not satisfactory, get out of the agreement. Number four was banned renewal bond anticipation note renewal. Our bid went out for 3.2 million, and Oppenheimer and Company won the bid based on providing the best interest rate. Of the 3.2 million, 1.2 million was borrowed of June last year for paying the architect, the construction manager, and testing. The additional 2 million is for telephone system with access control, windows, windows, walls being fabricated, expenses and materials. Our rating is AA3, which stayed the same as last year and is based on our financial statement. The fifth item was ESAC. Financial reporting requires us to break down expenditures by each building. Transportation may not be included. Once we get more direction, we'll move forward. The next meeting for the finance committee is the first week of August before the 13th audit. Respectively submitted, Liz Rock.
So I wanted to ask about item three, the first paragraph. Am I understanding correctly that if you take the $4,000 payment that's still owed to Redhook into consideration, that the program may not be in a positive position?
Well, since then, and we've had the close of the year, it looks, we haven't closed the books officially, but it looks very good that we're in a positive this year.
Oh, okay.
That's quite a shift.
Yeah, amazing.
So...
I don't think I've ever heard those words.
Yeah, you did, but that was when we had a management company here, and it wasn't allowed to be a negative. So, yeah, we haven't been in a positive since the management company, but, so, that's good news. We're going in a good direction.
I have a couple of questions. So what do we currently do with the state aid that we get back from Arts in Education?
It goes into our revenues. I mean, that's in your, part of your budget. This is one of the things that would happen if, give you an example, we do get grants and various things that we use for educational programs, arts and education, some environmental programs that are purchased through BOSIS, and our aid ratio is approximately 50%. So if the program costs $10,000, the following year, we'd get $5,000 back, basically, just as a rough example. The issue would be, though, if, if we were going to apply it to the following year's program or give it back to that program, we would have to take it out of the revenue portion of our budget, thereby finding more places to cut, unfortunately. So the idea of, 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 and where the finance committee was on this is to make no changes as it is, and to apply for grants and see whether or not there's any feedback from our granting partners to see whether or not they have any issues with it. And so far, we haven't heard of any. And, but if it did, it would cause a little bit of a, I want, it's not a cash flow issue. It's, it would be a budgeting issue. So if you saw, let's take that same instance, we were getting $5,000 back for that, and let's say our aid, our aid runs came out and said, in BOSIS aid, $300,000, I'm only going to budget $295,000. So that means that's $5,000 we're looking for, except it's on the revenue side, but you look over on the expenditure side to narrow it down.
That's a figure that changes, I mean, if they did less than added than...
Oh, certainly. Oh, yeah. It changes all the time. And that aid ratio isn't always 50%. It's gone up a little bit, it goes down a little bit, but we're usually somewhere between 45 and 50 when it comes to our BOSIS aid. But there's deductions off those totals, too, so it's not strictly dollar for dollar. Depends on the program.
My other question is, is this, the Pine Plains, is this, are we moving ahead with this, or is it still in...
It appears so, so far. Redhook has worked out an agreement that I've read through, and I'm perfectly fine with it. I mean, no additional cost to us, but it is being reviewed by their attorneys, and you remember that he, Larry is an employee of the Redhook School District. So Redhook controls...
That's why we're on the $4,000.
Right, right. That's, we're a month behind in getting, well, they didn't bill us.
And Larry feels like he can do this?
Yes, he does.
It's worked so well.
I know that, I know that. It is a one-year pilot program, if Pine Plains agrees to it all, and the person who, the additional person who's being hired actually is, is also going to be a Redhook employee, not a Pine Plains employee. That way it'll be under all, one umbrella and not part of Larry's person who's in charge as a Pine Plains employee. So it is going to be a Redhook employee. That was decided afterwards, that it's all going to stay under Redhook. But hopefully that they'll be picking up some of the reporting duties, so it'll take some relief off of Christine Natale's desk, and it would free her up to do these things. But pretty much not a lot will change on our things. I think there are a couple of positives that we thought about was, is that it will enable us, by picking up the other school district, to have more people potentially available to be substitutes or to, to work for employment here. So would Larry be around as much as he currently is? No, there's no doubt about that. We know that that's, that's not going to happen.
So what is, you see her now, two days a week?
Yeah, basically, about 40% of the time.
Would that go down in one day, or is that?
No, it's, it's kind of going to be a floating type of a thing, and see where it is. We know in the beginning, he's going to spend more time up in Pine Plains, just because that will be new to them. And once they got their operations down, then things could go back to normal, as far as that's concerned. I think what's occurred over the past couple of years, too, with Larry being here, a lot of our staff has taken a lot of, some of that work on, it's typically the director's thing about ordering foods and things of that nature. So the staff is taking responsibility for that. They're doing the production records. He's just making sure it's on, they're on top of it. If, if we find that there is enough savings, where we're going to be in the black, one of the things that Larry and I have discussed is to make one person, each of the three kitchens, to be the lead in those kitchens, and pay them a little bit more per hour, so they are responsible for everything that comes out of there, responsible for how they deal with the students, deal with the staff, getting everything in together as far as production records and all that record-keeping that they have to do, contacting parents who may owe money, and not that falling on, you know, Larry, which he's doing right now. But I think that's going to be the overwhelming part. And that's also where that other clerical help will help out, will be at Redhook. They, that person will be able to contact Rhinebeck parents anytime that someone goes into such a negative balance that it warrants reaching out to them.
So I, I see that this is just going to be a one-year trial, but I'm just wondering, like, if it's a complete disaster for some reason, you know, come November, you know, contractually, are we going to be locked into the year, or if, you know, if it just is a complete mess? I just don't want to.
I'll have to remember if it's a, if there is like a, like a 30 or 60-day notice to get out of it, or whether or not it's a one-time-a-year, like in April, we discuss, are we going to keep this going for the following year? I think it's more along that line, to tell you the truth, because trying to find somebody in the middle of the year to take over a program would be a lot for Pine Plains to take on. Because Pine Plains realizes that the Redhook, Rhinebeck, that's staying together. It's whether or not we would continue to have Pine Plains in the mix. And to leave them in the middle of the year, that's kind of not, we agreed to do this as a one-year pilot, but if it doesn't work, we're out of it. And I think it was more of an issue up in Redhook than it is here.
Right, well, I didn't know whether to run the screen. It's too much.
I'm not, well, you know, when you go into a pilot, you don't know how it's going to turn out for sure. I mean, we, we have a good feeling that he'll be able to handle it based on his track record. I, I would, I would sense that the worst-case scenario would be, and I'm not saying this is going to happen, those of you out in the field, but that after a period of time, he might draw the conclusion that, wow, I'm working myself to the bone here, it just doesn't work, and let's get through the year, and then we'll go back to the old situation. But we're trying, and that part of it is also, and we certainly don't lose money, especially since we're starting to, to break even legitimately. But we're also, you know, doing this in the spirit of cooperation and shared services, which, you know, a lot of school districts talk, talk, but we're trying to walk the walk, and there's only way, one way we're going to know, and that's give it a shot. And we think it's worth a try. But if it doesn't work, then this will be a, it'll be a one-and-done. And we'll keep, you know, the finance committee will be, as they have been all along, will be tracking that with us, and we'll be watching it very closely. We want this to work.
We have a question. Long-range planning.
Where is that one? Is that in here?
422.
Out on the outside.
I got it. Okay, so we met after CAC meeting with the, the public, the committee. We didn't have the results of, of what they wanted as far as data collection and things like that, but we did go over a letter that Lloyd wrote to Joe, really about the CDEP plan and how that ties into our core values. And one of the questions of that meeting was, can we rewrite the core values? So I think we all thought that that was really integral to the CDEP plan, and maybe we'll invite Marvin to the next meeting with the CAC committee to kind of go through that plan a little bit more detail and show how there's a human side to that equation. Also seemed to be a lot more emphasis from the committee on kind of not state testing results and looking more at, at other things. What we wanted to do was kind of poll those committee, because most of them are new to the district, and ask them why they moved here. You know, how did you find out about Rhinebeck? If it wasn't state tests or college entry, you know, numbers, but what drove you here? So maybe try to get them to really realize that those tests are important for what it's We also talked about the different levels of students, looking at Forecast Five, and you know, kind of in the middle, on the top, and where we fit in there. Wanted to look at, maybe take a field trip to some of the other schools, Plumb Brook and Rhinebeck. They're a little bit larger than Rhinebeck, so they might not be hitting the same problem that we're hitting. But we looked at how they did it a little bit more detail. Their enrollment's lower, it's about 827, and they went through a very big strategic plan, which looks like it worked, and their test scores kind of went up, and staff numbers kind of changed and stuff. So we wanted to talk to the former superintendent, Dr. Diane Bowers, to see, you know, how that process went and what they learned from it, and maybe we can get some, some information from there. We're going to get the compiled list and notes from the group, and we'll share that when we get it, and looking to take some field trips over the summer, if we have schedules, get it in. And then our next meetings is July 25th, August 13th, and August 29th.
Yeah, we, we met earlier today, so we don't have any notes to, to give you, but Mark and I represented the district. Gary Bassett, the village mayor, represented the village. It was a bit spinzy, he was not able to attend the meeting today. We talked about a few items. I met for about 40 minutes. Mayor Bassett was very appreciative of the letter that I wrote, as well as the letter that Diego Del Bear wrote on behalf of the board supporting the grant. They have, they have submitted all the paperwork for the grant. They expect to hear by the end of August as to whether, you know, they're successful. He is cautiously optimistic, if only because the, the pot of money available is available for only 10 counties in New York State, and we are apparently the southernmost of the counties. So he's feeling like we're not competing with Long Island or Westchester County for these monies. We're essentially competing with, with school districts and counties that at least go further north and perhaps further west than, than we. So he's hopeful. And, and we all agreed on the fact that if they would get the grant, that would be great thing for the Rhinebeck community, for kids in particular, but for the, for the community in general. We all know that the village board has been talking about the sidewalk issue since I've been here, and that's, you know, and probably before that, I'm sure, and that's quite a few years. So we're hopeful that this is going to break that logjam. I mean, it's totally a money logjam. It's not that the village board isn't interested in spending the money. They, like we, there, there are tax cap, and they don't have the money, but this grant would, would bring a very welcome infusion of, of cash to that project. So we, we keep our fingers crossed. And one of the issues that, oh, Gary also talked about the, the ongoing collaboration, especially between the school district and the village. They've got, I, one of our students is working there this summer. I'm not sure whether he's going to pay or is volunteering, but he's working with records management with the village, and has done it, this is the second year he'll be doing that, and spoke very highly of that, that collaboration. What's another thing you mentioned, Mark? I noticed something else we kind of think. Yeah. Oh, they had, they had asked us to, to post a, an opening that the village had. They were looking to hire some, some summer help, some paid summer help, and asked me if we would be willing to post this job hosting in our high school, I think, thinking that they might get some, some high school kids who would be interested. And, you know, I decided to post it in all three of our buildings, not that I was expecting middle school kids or elementary school kids to apply, although he said a few elementary school kids did apply, even if it was cute, and they, they definitely could not have done the work that they would have done. But I put it there mainly to see if some of our 10-month employees who were unemployed during the summer might be interested in working there. And in fact, they got some of our employees applied, as well as some of our kids. I'm not sure who they hired. Actually, I think they were going to make that appointment, or those appointments at their village board meeting tonight, but he was appreciative of us helping them generate candidate pool for the, for the open summer positions. I brought up an issue, and I want to just bring you up to speed on it. I have, and I think you have this letter somewhere at your place, as, as an FYI, I have attended so far this year representing our school district, an opioid summit that, that Senator Serino and, and Martin Arro have, have held. One was in the fall, one was just about a month, month and a half ago. And the, the focus of this was to bring school people and community service providers, you know, agencies that help, you know, help substance abusers detox and that. There was some law enforcement there, just to talk about what's going on in our county regarding, regarding what's happening nationwide. Everybody's calling the opioid crisis. They did not, for whatever reason, and I'm not second-guessing that, but they did not invite municipal representatives. For example, Mayor Bassett and Supervisor Spinzia, thank you, were not invited, nor from any of the other municipalities in the county. And it did come up at that, the second meeting, that in the, in the discussion amongst the 30, some other people who were there, that it might be a good idea for the municipalities to kind of get involved in this. If this isn't a school problem, it's not an agency problem, it's not a police problem, it's everybody's problem. So I did broach the topic with, with Mayor Bassett and ask him if, if he would be willing to collaborate on bringing some kind of, an education or an awareness program to Rhinebeck. Not as a school program, as a community program sponsored by the school district, the town, and the village, just to let people know what's going on, not to make it necessarily a law enforcement-centric thing, but to provide information to people so they know that we're no different than any other community in this country, and that problem exists here as well as other places. But it does exist here, to think that we're in this bubble where substance abuse isn't happening. And the statistics that I'm hearing from this opioid summit that I've attended is that the vast majority of people in Dutchess County, anyway, who are, who are abusing opioids are people in their early to mid-20s through their 30s. And we're not talking about a middle school problem. We're talking about adults, and they're even seeing a spike in, in opioid abuse among people in their 50s into their 60s. So it's not a kid problem, it's not a school problem, it's a community problem. Gary Bassett was very, very open to the idea. We threw around names of some people that both, that he is both going to contact to see if they might be interested in participating, as well as some contacts that I have more on a, on a county level. He's going to talk with Supervisor Spinzia to see if she would be interested in pursuing this. We're meeting again in early August to see where we're at, to see if we can go forward with something where all three of our organizations are collaborating. So I just want to give you a heads up before you may have heard it someplace else, and we'll pursue it and keep you posted. So that's just, just want to let you know about that as well. But I think that kind of covered everything we, we discussed, so just wanted to bring you up to speed on our Rhinebeck collaboration meeting earlier today.
Thank you both for attending and bringing up that important.
Yeah, the conversations have been good, too. Okay.
Good news? Good news?
Well, we were visited by three balloons on a Sunday morning.
Did they land here?
Oh, yeah, three of them landed on our campus. Nothing bad to report about it. It was kind of exciting. I wasn't up here to see them, but I did see, I was on Facebook, so they were here. And Gary said that two of them, because Gary lives on the other side of the, you know, I met her, so he's, his backyard abuts the school district property. And he said one of them landed like over towards, kind of like the high school cafeteria side, so they were able to get their chase vehicle there. They didn't have to leave the, the peg, the blacktop, they brought it down like right there. The other two that came down over here came down further out on the field, and he said that the, the two chase vehicles did not drive on our lawns. They sent people out there from their chase crew, and they dropped a tether or they somehow hooked up, and those people brought the two balloons, which were, you know, a few feet off the ground, still barely hovering, close to the blacktop, so they did all their work without having to, to drive on our fields. And he said they were like incredibly respectful of the school district property in doing that. So I just wanted to pass that along to you. And aside from the school angle, I thought it was a great event, and it brought a lot of people into town, a lot of people into the, at least into the restaurants and places I was passed and by, and that's what it's all about. So that's my good news for the night.
The work is beginning on the exercise equipment.
Oh, yeah, I checked out the Twitter feed today. Stuff's going up already, and we've, we've had, we're going to be, when they get more work done, we're going to be, the Rhinebeck Interact Club has volunteered to, to rake mulch or whatever mulch-ish product they're putting there to, to cushion people who might fall. So they're going to be raking out the, the stuff as soon as they're making, making a little more progress. But they're, they're moving along. If you haven't seen it, check out the Facebook page or, or the Twitter account. Posted a picture just this morning. Actually, I think I played around it. Exercise thing.
It's a buggy.
Yeah.
Any other good news?
I'm not sure about that.
Any other good news? All business?
I don't have any.
Are we all set for the, the convention?
We are not. Glad you brought that up. Whitney is, has been taking names, a number of you have responded. So we would like to be ready to register people by mid-July, which means it's, it's coming up. As we mentioned before, we can register people later.
Okay.
But it's like with, with everything else in this world, it's more expensive to register later. I doubt, please don't hold me to this, but I doubt they would run. later. I doubt, please don't hold me to this, but I doubt they would run out of registrations. I think the biggest, the bigger issue would be lodging.
I'll take that on. It's just with the new job.
No, I, no, I get it. So when we get to like probably next week, we'll send out kind of a last, here's who's told us they want to go. And we're going to register by like the end of next week. If you want in the first wave and your name's not on this list, let us know. If you want to register later, let us know when you're ready to commit, and we'll do what we can.
Okay. Is there, can you cancel if you register?
There's a fee. There's a fee.
One way or another.
They make it difficult, right?
There's a fee for canceling.
Jeff?
Yes.
I am interested in attending.
Does Whitney know that?
Yes.
Okay.
But I'd also be interested in going to the school law pre-session?
Yeah, Whitney mentioned that to me earlier. So again, we'll register whomever wants to go where.
It opens July 16th.
Oh, July 16th it opens?
At 10:00 a.m.
Registration does?
Yeah.
Yes. So I have to register you for the conference in order to register you for hotel.
Right.
So that has to happen per se.
What day is the 16th? It's coming up. It's the 10th, right?
Yeah.
So we really ought to know by the end of this week and then register Monday.
I don't believe it.
Okay.
And one more.
Yeah.
Just.
Yeah, put these at your, at your place. Again, I don't, I don't get any kind of kickback from getting people to go, but there are two things. One is for the NISBA Law Conference, which is being held on the 24th in Latham and on the 27th on July. That is in White Plains. Those are the ones that are closest to us. And the Mid Hudson School Study Council's annual law conference is on August 3rd, which is a Friday down in.
River.
Yeah.
River Lake.
Yeah. So again, if you're interested, that's, those registrations are coming up pretty quick.
Yeah, registration is next week for this one.
How different is the agenda for that to NISBA? Like, will that stuff be covered at NISBA?
There's some overlap, but.
It's worth going, though?
I think, well, a couple of years ago, and I don't want to leave anybody out if I fail to mention their names, but I remember Laura and I went to both of them. And I think the only overlap was Jay Verona's shtick. He's the, the NISBA attorney. That was similar, but I'd say better than half or three-quarters of both of them were different. So it depends on really how much time you can spare. But going to one, I think, would be better than going to none if you're able to go. And they're both, they're both good. So just let us know so we can, we can register you. Is there anything else that I needed to line people? Whitney, can you? Okay.
Okay. Another chance for public comment. No publics. Any other?
So I just want to let everybody know that you recall the last meeting, we had a presentation by Bosse's about their upcoming project and really more about the financing piece of it. We'll have to be voting here in July about, you know, how we're going to, whether we're going to go on the intermunicipal agreement to finance the project or whether we won't. If we go on the intermunicipal agreement, then we can get our own financing for our portion of the project. And you'll recall that I mentioned at the last meeting that Bosse's really hasn't put out a lot of information about the project itself. And they actually came to the meeting that night to discuss the financing piece of it. So within a couple of days of our meeting, and actually it was in the newspaper also, but I got an email from Dr. Houli from Bosse's wanting to, you know, meet with me or, you know, talk on the phone about the project and, you know, having heard what I had to say at the meeting. So last week I did have a conversation with Dr. Houli on the phone. We spent about a half an hour on the telephone. And he did assure me that Bosse's does plan to put out more information about the project, you know, and they will make an effort to come to another board meeting and, you know, bring drawings and things like that so they can really show us what the project is about. I really stressed to him that, you know, in my mind, it's really a worthwhile project, but if they wanted to pass, really need to get the word out to the public that this is what we're doing and what the efficiencies are and, you know, there's money to be saved and those kind of things in order to make the public aware about it and come out and vote in favor of it. So I think it was productive discussion and so there's more to come in that area. They will be coming out again, you know, make public presentations and inviting people to come to the campus to see what they're doing and things like that so that people get an idea what the project's about.
Nice. Got to call right away.
Yeah. But I think you can tap on Bill Kimble's somewhat, somewhat over the top, in my opinion, article. I mean, he made it sound, I thought, and I expressed this to Dr. Houli, I think it sounded like worse than it went, but the questions did come up and the questions were legit. And I was happy to hear that he contacted you to try to address those questions.
Watch our tape to see how it really.
Yeah.
They were legitimate questions?
Mm-hmm.
They're still out there about the tax cap, but.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other other? Okay. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following consent items.
So.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passed. All of those.
Wow.
That's much nicer, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve as a first reading the modifications to Board Policy 5300, District Code of Conduct 5410, Wellness and 8530 Cafeteria Meal Charges.
So, second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? On the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the following resolution. Whereas the Dutchess Board of Cooperative Education Services, Dutchess County, New York, Bosse's is proposing to undertake a project consisting of the following improvements at the Bosse's campus on South Point Turnpike, minor additions and renovations of certain existing facilities, construction of a new alternative high school building, addition of parking, wastewater treatment, and possibly water supply facilities to accommodate these improvements, and the acquisition of original furnishings, equipment, machinery, and apparatus required in connection with the purpose for which such buildings, facilities, improvements are to be used. The project had an estimated cost of $36,800,000. And whereas Bosse's has requested that each of its 13 component districts, the component districts including the Rhinebeck Central School District, enter to a joint agreement with respect to the project. And whereas the joint agreement sets forth the cost of the project, provides for an allocation and appropriation of said cost among the component school districts to the resident weighted average daily attendance value assigned to each component school district for the 2018-19 fiscal year, and sets forth a portion of said cost to be provided by each such component school district in accordance with such allocation and appointment. And whereas upon execution and delivery of the joint agreement by each of the component districts, Bosse's will schedule a capital project referendum requesting voter approval of the project. And whereas the Board of Education of the district desires to authorize the execution and delivery of the joint agreement by the district, now therefore be resolved by this Board of Education as follows. Section 1. The form and substance of the joint agreement in substantially the same, the form presented to this meeting are hereby approved and executed. Execution and delivery of the joint agreement by the district are hereby authorized. The President of the Board of Education is hereby authorized on behalf of the district to execute and deliver the joint agreement. The joint agreement shall be in substantially the form thereof presented to this meeting, and such changes, variation, omissions, and insertions as the President of the Board of Education shall approve the execution therefore by the President to constitute conclusive evidence of such approval. Section 2. This resolution should take effect immediately upon its adoption.
So, move.
Second. Any discussion?
I just, I apologize because I wasn't here for the discussion of the, of the project. But if we don't approve it, but the project gets approved by voters, then what is the, I know there was some discussion of the cost being higher to each component district because they'll have to fund it individually. But is it compulsory that districts fund it if they don't do it through the joint agreement?
Yes, if they don't do it through the joint agreement and it passes, is my understanding, then any of the districts who don't, who aren't part of that joint agreement, they're talking about using the dormitory authority for funding, which, as they presented at our last meeting, would be a higher cost percentage-wise, higher expense to the districts.
But that would be compulsory. The district would have to do that. They could just say we opt out.
No, there's no opting out.
Okay.
If the vote, if the voters, well, it's really a matter of the fun either. We want to all be in it together, all 13 districts together and fund it at this level, or if even just, as I understand it, if even one of the 13 districts says, for whatever reason, I don't know, no, we're not going to be in that joint agreement, then, then everybody's talking about having to finance it through DAS.
Okay.
I guess there could be, and I think Mark may have brought this up in our last meeting, there could be political reasons why a school district might decide, no, we're not going to be part of this collaborative funding of this project should it pass. I'm not saying that would be good or bad, but it kind of, I'll say it, it kind of sticks it to the other districts to have to get funding of their portion at a higher, higher cost.
But the district that said no would also be paying.
Yeah, yes, may or may not.
That's the issue. DASNE will have a set rate, whatever that may be. Each district would then individually go out to get their bond. You're all individually out there on the market. You may or may not get as good a rate as DASNE. Some districts in our county may not.
If your credit rating wasn't good.
Depends on where your credit is.
Probably definitely cost you more.
Right. So that's, that's the issue. And that's why we do want to go be able to, first of all, sell it at $36.8 million, and then be able to go out and get funding which should be lower than going through DASNE. But what would happen if we don't all agree to do it this way? Camera was $1.6 million higher or $1.7 million higher? It may come with a higher borrowing rate, too, on top of it. So.
Thank you.
But all will be subject to the voters of Dutchess County.
Any other discussion? All in favor? That motion passes. Do we need a second discussion?
Okay.
Okay. Do you need a turn?
What?